Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 6:45 PM and a quorum of members is present. So the meeting of the Board of Education of the School District of New Berlin is called to order. Please call the roll.
Ms. Crosby.
Here.
Mr. Helmer.
Here.
Mr. Kurth.
Here.
Ms. Scholz.
Here.
Mr. Seidel.
Here.
Ms. Unger.
Here.
Ms. Wundercheck.
Here.
I would entertain a motion to recess to closed session.
Madam President, I move to recess into closed session pursuant to Section 19.851(c), E, and F of the Wisconsin statutes to consider, A, the approval of closed session minutes of June 28th, B, employment, performance, and compensation matters pertaining to staff, and C, a recommendation for benefits consultant.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kurth and a second by Mr. Helmer. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kurth.
Yes.
Mr. Helmer.
Yes.
Ms. Crosby.
Yes.
Ms. Scholz.
Yes.
Mr. Seidel.
Yes.
Ms. Unger.
Yes.
Ms. Wundercheck.
Yes.
We are moving into closed session and will return to open session around 7 o'clock. In recognition of the serious and important nature of our efforts here, we will join in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. For all those who are able, please rise. And now for those who wish to prepare for the meeting, we will have a moment of silence. This is a public meeting of the Board of Education. Prior to this meeting, notice was given to the public last Friday by providing the agenda to the City Library. The agenda was also posted on the district website. A copy of the agenda was forwarded to the Journal Sentinel, the Waukesha Freeman, and the Waukesha Now, all of which have filed requests for all public notices. We begin tonight's meeting with recognitions.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning Kelly Kwiatkowski to talk about our student recognition today related to the 2021 Wisconsin YESer Youth Entrepreneurs in Science Business Plan Contest.
It is my great pleasure to be here to acknowledge Prindill Panda. Why don't you come up? Let me tell you a little bit about why we are recognizing him tonight. Prindill is a ninth grade student at New Berlin Eisenhower and he won a statewide business competition. He is a young entrepreneur with a great innovative mind and he competed against other middle school and high school students to win the Wisconsin YES Business Plan Competition sponsored by the Wisconsin Technology Council. His product was all weather glowing fish bait. And as a fisherman myself, I was pretty excited to read about his product and I would love to buy it when it goes on production. It's an artificial bait that you can fish with and catch multiple species of fish in different weather, different climates. It comes in different colors. And they judged him based off of the market competition, likely competitors, and a number of other things on the rubric. But he had to write a thousand word essay to be considered for this prize recognition winner. So congratulations. He also presented for them in early June. So we got to see him virtually throughout the state present all about his product. So he's going to say a few words today, but congratulations. We're really proud that you're a New Berlin Eisenhower student and thank you for already showing your mastery of design thinking skills and being college and career ready.
Thank you for this recognition. Definitely doing this competition wasn't easy. Started out with a 250 essay, word essay, and to move on to the next phase, ended up having to do a thousand word essay. And then ended up doing a presentation slideshow. So definitely doing this recognition and for all my hard work is nice. And thank you all. If anybody has, know anybody who can help with this product such as retailers or people who they know are really good at fishing and do it frequently, please notify us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. We're just going to reenact the hank-jack.
Okay.
Up next is privilege of the floor. Meetings of the Board are conducted for the purpose of carrying on the business of the schools and therefore are not public meetings but meetings held in public. This portion of the meeting is an opportunity for you to come and voice your concerns to the Board. So please do not be offended when we quietly listen. We may even take notes. We do not immediately respond to your questions and comments. This is a time for you to talk and us to listen. Thank you for coming to voice your comments and concerns. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone, address the chair, and state your name and whether or not you are a resident in the school district. Each presentation is to be restricted to a maximum of three minutes. Privilege of the floor will be limited to one half hour. Presentations are not to be designed for purposes of engaging others in a debate in this forum. Discussion of certified, classified, or professional personnel or of individual Board of Education members shall not be considered an appropriate topic for this forum and the speaker will be ruled out of order. First up is Scott Yench.
Hello, my name is Scott Yench and I am a resident of New Berlin. And I'm here tonight for the same reason that I was here a year ago, and that is to advocate for the safety and well-being of our students and staff. Contrary to what some have said earlier this year, I am not against opening our schools, nor am I looking to subject anyone to restrictions that are unnecessary. As is tradition here, we have no idea what is going to be presented tonight, and you're forcing us to comment now instead of after that presentation. So I have no way to tailor my comments based on that. With that in mind, in order to enter this building, we all had to complete a health survey. So that's a clear sign that we are not yet completely out of the woods. I am still of the opinion that if we are going to open schools to students, we need to make sure that our students and the staff that serves them are taken care of. We need to be clear to everyone involved how things will be done with the confidence that those steps are being done with a sound medical basis. Waukesha County, the State of Wisconsin, and many other parts of the country are seeing an uptick in COVID-19 infections largely as a result of the stalled vaccination rates and variants that result from continued spread of the virus. Even though it is possible for vaccinated individuals to contract the virus, the majority of serious cases are happening in the unvaccinated. Considering that no one under 12 can yet be vaccinated, this directly affects every student at Orchard Lane, Poplar Creek, Ronald Reagan, and Elmwood Elementary. I think we need to seriously consider the guidance for schools from the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, which say that masks should be worn by unvaccinated individuals and other mitigation strategies such as physical distancing continue to be followed. I think everyone is looking forward to the upcoming school year looking much better than the previous one. And the best way for us to ensure that the best, ensure the best outcome for everyone is for medical guidance to be followed and for us not to take our eyes off what's most important, and that is the safety of our children, teachers, and other staff. In addition to various mitigation strategies, please consider taking steps to encourage continued diligence in the student population, their families, and the community at large. By working together for the common good, we can continue to enjoy less restrictions, more social activities, and a healthier school community. Thank you.
Angela Spielman.
Hi there. My name is Angela Spielman. I am a resident of New Berlin. About two weeks ago, it came to my attention that there was some very inappropriate reading material accessible to students on their school issued technology via an app called Sora. I would like to start by thanking Joe Garza and Janet Schultz for not only responding to my concerns but acting quickly and have the app shut down for review. However, it's still very concerning to me that these books were available to children as young as 12 years old in seventh grade. And before you think I'm overreacting, allow me to read from you an excerpt from one of these books in question. This book, This Book is Gay by James Dawson, was available via the Sora app just a few weeks ago, and from chapter nine, The Ins and Outs of Gay Sex. "Blowies: Oral Sex Is Popping Another Dude's Pee in Your Mouth or Indeed Popping Yours and His? There is only one hard and fast rule when it comes to blowjobs. Watch the teeth. Lips, tongue, yes. Teeth, no. As with handjobs and breakfast eggs, all men like their blowjobs served in a different way. The term blowjob is actually massively misleading. You won't actually be blowing on his penis. It's more like sucking. Although I stress you're not trying to suck his kidneys out through his urethra. It's more about sliding your mouth up and down the shaft of his cock. And letting a guy come in your mouth is a safe sex no-no. Get away from the volcano before it erupts." I'll spare you the rest. It's available at the New Berlin Public Library if you're interested. Does this sound appropriate for seventh graders? Let me be clear. This isn't about the LBGTQ subject matter and it's not even about a book that's talking about sex. It's the vulgar and explicit manner in which it's described. This book is not even intelligently written using slang terms for male and female anatomy and demeaning the LBGT community lifestyles by insinuating that all they want to do is have sex with each other. In other sections of this book, it outlines exactly how kids can use apps to meet strangers for casual sex. And this material could be considered criminal when available to minors in the Wisconsin's per state code 948.11, which I have printed out for you all to look at.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, for those who wish to prepare for the meeting, we will have a moment of silence. This is a public meeting of the Board of Education. Prior to this meeting, notice was given to the public last Friday by providing the agenda to the City Library. The agenda was also posted on the district website. A copy of the agenda was forwarded to the Journal Sentinel, the Waukesha Freeman, and the Waukesha Now, all of which have filed requests for all public notices. We begin tonight's meeting with recognitions.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning Kelly Kwiatkowski to talk about our student recognition today related to the 2021 Wisconsin YESer Youth Entrepreneurs in Science Business Plan Contest.
It is my great pleasure to be here to acknowledge Prindill Panda. Why don't you come up? Let me tell you a little bit about why we are recognizing him tonight. Sure, yeah, yeah. Prindill is a ninth-grade student at New Berlin Eisenhower, and he won a statewide business competition. He is a young entrepreneur with a great innovative mind, and he competed against other middle school and high school students to win the Wisconsin YES Business Plan Competition sponsored by the Wisconsin Technology Council. His product was all-weather glowing fish bait. And as a fisherman myself, I was pretty excited to read about his product, and I would love to buy it when it goes on production. It's an artificial bait that you can fish with and catch multiple species of fish in different weather, different climates. It comes in different colors. And they judged him based off of the market competition, likely competitors, and a number of other things on the rubric. But he had to write a thousand-word essay to be considered for this prize recognition winner. So congratulations. He also presented for them in early June. So we got to see him virtually throughout the state present all about his product. So he's going to say a few words today. But congratulations, we're really proud that you're a New Berlin Eisenhower student. And thank you for already showing your mastery of design thinking skills and being college and career-ready, so.
Thank you for this recognition. Definitely doing this competition wasn't easy. Started out with a 250 essay-word essay, and to move on to the next phase, ended up having to do a thousand-word essay. So, and then ended up doing a presentation slideshow. So definitely doing this recognition and for all my hard work is nice. And thank you all. If anybody has, know anybody who can help with this product, such as retailers or people who they know are really good at fishing and do it frequently, please notify us. And thank you.
Thank you.
We're just going to reenact the handshake.
Up next is Privilege of the Floor. Meetings of the Board are conducted for the purpose of carrying on the business of the schools and therefore are not public meetings, but meetings held in public. This portion of the meeting is an opportunity for you to come and voice your concerns to the Board. So please do not be offended when we quietly listen. We may even take notes. We do not immediately respond to your questions and comments. This is a time for you to talk and us to listen. Thank you for coming to voice your comments and concerns. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone, address the chair, and state your name and whether or not you are a resident in the school district. Each presentation is to be restricted to a maximum of three minutes. Privilege of the Floor will be limited to one half hour. Presentations are not to be designed for purposes of engaging others in a debate in this forum. Discussion of certified, classified, or professional personnel or of individual Board of Education members shall not be considered an appropriate topic for this forum, and the speaker will be ruled out of order. First up is Scott Yunch.
Hello, my name is Scott Yunch, and I am a resident of New Berlin. And I'm here tonight for the same reason that I was here a year ago, and that is to advocate for the safety and well-being of our students and staff. Contrary to what some have said earlier this year, I am not against opening our schools, nor am I looking to subject anyone to restrictions that are unnecessary. As is tradition here, we have no idea what is going to be presented tonight, and you're forcing us to comment now instead of after that presentation. So I have no way to tailor my comments based on that. With that in mind, in order to enter this building, we all had to complete a health survey. So that's a clear sign that we are not yet completely out of the woods. I am still of the opinion that if we are going to open schools to students, we need to make sure that our students and the staff that serves them are taken care of. We need to be clear to everyone involved how things will be done with the confidence that those steps are being done with a sound medical basis. Waukesha County, the State of Wisconsin, and many other parts of the country are seeing an uptick in COVID-19 infections, largely as a result of the stalled vaccination rates and variants that result from continued spread of the virus. Even though it is possible for vaccinated individuals to contract the virus, the majority of serious cases are happening in the unvaccinated. Considering that no one under 12 can yet be vaccinated, this directly affects every student at Orchard Lane, Poplar Creek, Ronald Reagan, and Elmwood Elementary. I think we need to seriously consider the guidance for schools from the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, which say that masks should be worn by unvaccinated individuals and other mitigation strategies such as physical distancing continue to be followed. I think everyone is looking forward to the upcoming school year looking much better than the previous one. And the best way for us to ensure that the best, ensure the best outcome for everyone is for medical guidance to be followed and for us not to take our eyes off what's most important, and that is the safety of our children, teachers, and other staff. In addition to various mitigation strategies, please consider taking steps to encourage continued diligence in the student population, their families, and the community at large. By working together for the common good, we can continue to enjoy less restrictions, more social activities, and a healthier school community. Thank you.
Angela Spielman.
Hi there, my name is Angela Spielman. I am a resident of New Berlin. About two weeks ago, it came to my attention that there was some very inappropriate reading material accessible to students on their school-issued technology via an app called Sora. I would like to start by thanking Joe Garza and Janet Schultz for not only responding to my concerns, but acting quickly and have the app shut down for review. However, it's still very concerning to me that these books were available to children as young as 12 years old in seventh grade. And before you think I'm overreacting, allow me to read from you an excerpt from one of these books in question. This book, This Book is Gay by James Dawson, was available via the Sora app just a few weeks ago. And from chapter nine, "The Ins and Outs of Gay Sex." Blowies, oral sex is popping another dude's peen in your mouth or indeed popping yours and his. There is only one hard and fast rule when it comes to blowjobs. Watch the teeth. Lips, tongue, yes, teeth, no. As with handjobs and breakfast eggs, all men like their blowjobs served in a different way. The term blowjob is actually massively misleading. You won't actually be blowing on his penis, it's more like sucking. Although I stress you're not trying to suck his kidneys out through his urethra. It's more about sliding your mouth up and down the shaft of his cock. And letting a guy come in your mouth is a safe sex no-no. Get away from the volcano before it erupts. I'll spare you the rest, it's available at the New Berlin Public Library if you're interested. Does this sound appropriate for seventh graders? Let me be clear, this isn't about the LBGTQ subject matter, and it's not even about a book that's talking about sex. It's the vulgar and explicit manner in which it's described. This book is not even intelligently written using slang terms for male and female anatomy and demeaning the LBGT community lifestyles by insinuating that all they want to do is have sex with each other. In other sections of this book, it outlines exactly how kids can use apps to meet strangers for casual sex. And this material could be considered criminal when available to minors in the Wisconsin's per state code 948.11, which I have printed out for you all to look at. I do think it's a parent's obligation to be aware of what their children are consuming on technology in the classroom, which is why curriculum transparency is more important than ever. We need to be aware of what the curriculum choices and lecture topics are in the classroom, and we need to be able to hold accountable educators and administrators who think this reading material is appropriate. I would like to know who is in charge of approving such material and who, and would also propose some type of parental committee for accountability and monitoring of books that are selected. Finally, I would like to quickly state that parents should continue to have the choice of whether they mask their children or not. There's a fresh wave of propaganda hitting the scene, and I'm deeply concerned for our children's well-being. I've already sent you this, but I took a survey of parents here in New Berlin. In just 48 hours, I had 133 responses, and 98% of those surveyed are in favor of keeping masks optional this fall. Related, 97% of those surveyed are in favor of recalling board members who don't adequately represent the wishes of their constituents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tanya McHale.
My name is Tanya McHale, and I am a resident of New Berlin. I'm standing here in front of you to address the ongoing issue at these previous meetings that we've had. It's not just masks, it's parental rights and individual choices, something that some of the board members have hindered throughout these meetings. Some have discredited credible data that has shown masks aren't effective and also have the reverse effect. Putting our children's in health risks situations eight hours a day, five days a week, is unexcusable. And that's from personal experience as well. Mental health amongst primary and secondary grades will continue to be unnoticed until it is too late because of control over masks. Innuendos of "not vaxxed, then get a mask", which is said by teachers, classmates, further dividing these kids, is unexcusable. And first off, I'd like to sit, well, last off, I'd like to sit there and say, where's the choice coming in? How is it that the Board has a choice, gives us a choice for masks, no masks, but yet you all push the mask? And here, our kids are not having an individual choice. Parents aren't taking back their rights, they're being shut down by this. This, remember, making the decision for a mask is not leaving it up to the parents. It's not a choice, it's forced. Thank you.
Kaitlin Mabry.
Hello, my name's Kaitlin Mabry, and I am a resident of New Berlin. I have three children, now three children that are in the Poplar Creek School. I have a fourth grade, one going into fourth grade, one going into first, and one going into kindergarten. First, I want to say that I absolutely love Poplar Creek. I love, I've loved every year that my kids have been there. And so that's why I'm super passionate about coming and talking to you guys about this, because I just, mama bear is out, and I just want to make sure that my children are both mentally, emotionally, and physically safe in that school environment. That being said, first, I wanted to rewind a little bit, and I wanted to say that I 100% agreed with what Joe Garza said about the diversity and inclusion that has been implemented into the schools. I think it's an incredible, all the programming is incredible, and I don't feel that it needs to be changed in any way. Yes, I am referring to CRT. I'm incredibly passionate about not allowing that one specific subject matter to overrule all of how we teach our kids about diversity and inclusion. So now I would like to talk about how I'm super passionate about reiterating that masks are optional. I'm so thankful that you guys voted that at the end of the year. It was a super hard thing for me. My husband and I wrestled with sending them, and I did choose to send my kids last year. But every single day, I would pull up and I would just pray for them to be safe in those masks because I researched and researched and researched, and there is a medical risk. And I believe that with every medical risk, there needs to be a choice. As their mother, I feel that I, every child, I'm an early childhood special ed teacher. And so I study child development, and I know that every child is unique in their own way. And every child is able and capable of handling the mask in a different way. And so, for instance, my fourth grader has ADHD, and she constantly, she would shoot holes in her masks, and she actually contracted a virus from her mask. My kindergartner from, she was a kindergarten last year. She had anxiety with the mask, so there was a mental effect that it had on her. And she would touch it constantly. And so here she's germ, 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 touching, touching. They're not OSHA-trained to wear these masks. And so, yes, maybe the CDC, and they recommend that kids that age wear it, but they recommend that they wear it correctly. And personally, my kids aren't able to wear it correctly for eight hours a day. And so because of that, I believe that I should be given the choice as a mother to choose whether I think that that's a safe choice for my child. And so I know you guys have been sent articles, peer-reviewed research articles that state that there is a risk with wearing masks. And so I just really hope that you consider that when making your decision. I thank you for your time, and I hope you all have a nice night.
Thank you. Dan O'Donnell.
Hello, my name is Dan O'Donnell. I am indeed a resident of New Berlin. And ladies and gentlemen, I, like you, believe in science, and I believe that we should follow the science. And the science is now leading us unmistakably to an unavoidable conclusion that children should not be masked in school. Over the course of the entire pandemic, 16 months, there have been roughly 300 COVID-19 deaths among those 17 and under in the United States out of a population of 56 million. That is one death per 200,000 children, per the CDC. By way of comparison, over the past eight years, the flu, seasonal influenza, has killed an average of 456 children per year. For children, COVID-19 quite literally has been a mild flu season. And fortunately for our teachers and our support staff, the science has proven that children are not spreaders of COVID-19 either. Recent study published in the Journal of the American Medical Association showed that young children are not only at low risk for developing COVID-19, they also don't play a significant role in the spread of it while attending school. Now, this was corroborated by a wide-scale study in Israel published in the journal PLOS Computational Biology. It found that children are roughly half as susceptible to COVID as adults. Moreover, a study published in Clinical Infectious Diseases shows that children are unlikely to be the source of COVID-19 in their homes where the overwhelming majority of COVID-19 transmission takes place. Kids aren't spreading COVID-19 at home, and they're not spreading it at school either. And not only does requiring them to wear masks make no sense from an efficacy standpoint, wearing masks might also hurt them. A study published in the Journal of the American Medical Association for Pediatrics found that wearing masks caused children to inhale too much carbon dioxide. The normal CO2 limit is 0.04%. The upper safety limit is considered to be 0.2%. Children wearing masks for a prolonged period of time were getting sometimes as much as 1.6%. This is plainly unsafe, and it's unscientific. And I, like you, follow the science, believe in science, and trust the science. And on the issue of forcing children to wear masks in schools, the science is settled. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Getzke.
Good evening, my name is Brian Getzke, I am a resident of New Berlin. My statement is in regards to your policy 2260 that you're going to be covering later this evening. It's about the nondiscrimination and access to equal education opportunity. I would like to request that you add the terminology for vaccinated and unvaccinated personnel as well within this original statement that states, "The Board does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, ancestry, creed, pregnancy, marital status, parental status, sexual orientation, sex including transgender status, change of sex or gender identity, or physical, mental, emotional, or learning disability, protected in any one of its students' programs and activities." So again, I'd like to request that vaccinated and unvaccinated be added to the nondiscrimination list. Thank you.
Thank you. We have President's Message, so just wanted to welcome everybody back. We had a bit of a break. And so this is our first official meeting of the 2021-22 school year. And I have a request, do you have a bottle of water? I forgot to grab one.
I have two.
Thank you, okay. So next is the Administrative Team Report. What did I miss?
I think, I think we missed one of the Privilege of the Floor forms.
Did we, I'm sorry. Let me make sure here. We got Scott, Angela, Tanya, Kaitlin, did we miss Kaitlin? No, she did, Tanya, Dan. Oh, were they on the same page? Two, three, four, five, six, seven? I don't have any, I only want Tanya.
Yeah, we only had six re-present.
Because I, I have Tanya McHale. Come on, yes. Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
You didn't have to say my last name this time, so. All right.
No, Tayak?
It's like kayak.
Tayak, I gotta remember.
Tanya Tayak, yes, I'm a New Berlin resident, so. I have two things to talk about today, optional masks and curriculum transparency. Many parents send their children to school each day with the full expectation that they will learn math, science, history, and literature, subjects that will help them advance their life goals and ambitions, especially at the elementary level. We are fortunate to send our children to a high academically challenging school district. Our kids have many opportunities to learn additional topics like business, finance, government, as well as those college-level courses. Parents do not expect their children to participate in controversial topic debates and assignments like caucacity, transgenderism, politics, politics unless they're in the AP Government class, in which it should be managed without bias from the teacher. I agree with some of the comments that I've heard this past year from parents about children being afraid to go to school because that did happen to some children, and not because they're transgender, gay, a minority, et cetera, but because their opinions differ from those children who do identify themselves as such. My husband and I raised our children to be respectful of others, their opinions, to speak up for the weak, and don't be afraid to speak their mind. In 13 years that my children have been in the New Berlin School District, there were no issues that are being brought up recently that I'm aware of in the elementary schools, as well as the middle and the high school. I've spent a lot of time with HSA at Ronald Reagan. I've spent a lot of time with other organizations. I volunteer a lot with Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, et cetera, and never heard from other parents about any of the issues that I'm hearing about when it comes to the CRT issues. So, I'm very disappointed this past year that the issues have arisen. And I do believe that it has a lot to do with certain adults bringing these issues forward and dividing our community and our school district. I'm going to read something from the publication of Manhattan Institute. "There can be no keener revelation of a society's soul," Nelson Mandela famously said, "than the way in which it treats its children. By that standard, our society now has the soul of an abusive parent. The pandemic has turned American adults, or at least the ones who make the rules, into selfish neurotics who have been punishing innocent children for over a year and still can't restrain themselves. When the pandemic began, the lack of knowledge about COVID-19 justified this behavior. That excuse has vanished. It became clear long ago that the virus is less dangerous to children than the flu and that keeping the schools open poses minimal risk of spreading infections." So once again, I do ask that as we go into the school year, that masks are optional. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we can move on to the Administrative Report.
Yes, I've got a couple of updates. The first one being related to the Sora reading app of which you just heard of. Several weeks ago, there was an article written specifically about the Elm Brook School District related to these controversial topics that were brought up and identified within this article. It did relate to sexually explicit material that was accessible to elementary students. I believe there were five different books, similar in nature to what was read briefly that students over at Elm Brook had access to. They also did have, through the seventh and twelfth grade, one resource available to them, and that was the one that was just mentioned. I want to clarify that once we were brought, that once that was brought to our attention, we immediately looked into how we worked with Sora, and fortunately, to a certain degree, we did have certain filters turned on that Elm Brook did not have. And so, you know, I do know that Sora was a resource that was provided to many school districts over the course, especially over the last year, that because of the pandemic, we wanted resources available to our students, particularly not this last school year, the previous school year, when we were shut down until further notice to have families and their students have access to these types of apps, Sora being one of them. We further looked into it and recognized that, again, at the seventh and eighth grade, there was one resource that was available based off of that article, and again, of which was referenced tonight. We did look back, and we were trying to figure out how many times, A, was that ever checked out? And B, you know, the approval process of how, how that would be manipulated, at least by the school district. After talking with Sora personnel and so on, we, we thought we could do certain things and have certain things shut off based on our suggestion, similar to the filters that we had set for other grade levels. And it is a, it is a behemoth of a resource of, that are available in this. Basically, it's an online library. And so we immediately, after it was determined that we couldn't necessarily nitpick or shut certain things off, that we would hit pause on that app until further notice. As of now, we are still trying to work with Sora to determine exactly how much control we as a school district have. As of right now, it's my understanding that we do not have the level of controls that we would like. And so we, again, we are continuing to work with Sora to see what exactly can be done. The other thing that we want to be able to do is determine the feasibility of being able to, to monitor and, and, you know, the thousands and thousands and thousands of resources in this app, similar to others. And it may be determined that we may not be able to move forward with Sora as a result of that. Again, we've not come to a conclusion, but as, as of right now where we're at, we do believe we may be moving away from Sora. And we are also not only identifying and reviewing Sora, but also reviewing other apps and/or content that we have as we continue to do on an annual basis. I do want to clarify that while we have representation on the New Berlin Public Library Board, we, it is essentially an ex officio board. And they are, we, the school board, the school district, does not have any domain over the public library whatsoever. That would be city officials and the mayor. And so while, sure, they may have, what they do, what we are doing here is completely under the guise and the direction of the school board, and they are under the direction of the City Common Council. So they will do what they do, but we will do what we can do within the school district. Again, as I had mentioned, we are trying to determine, you know, of these apps and/or things that we, again, thought were, we were trying to support our families and their students, we need to be extremely careful to make sure that we know exactly what's, what's available to our students and their families. So, again, we'll provide an update to the Board as we continue to investigate and inquire any further. But again, at this time, given what we know, unless anything changes, we will no longer. unless anything changes, we will no longer be providing that app to our students and their families. As far as the topic of curriculum transparency, I do want to let the school board know that I do plan on providing a presentation to the board sometime before the start of the school year. I'll have to talk to Janet and Mitch to determine which of the next two board meetings we will do that at. But what we want to be able, what I want to be able to do is provide what exactly we share with our families currently via Canvas. You know, there are, there is access to the resources that we share, not only to our community on our website, but making sure that that, the webpages are up to date, that our standards are up to date. For example, tonight, you'll be approving the standards, which is essentially just a, a formality, but it is something that we have to adopt annually, and we do need to adopt basically standards as far as we move forward with our curriculum, so that when Kelly does her work with our curriculum reviews, just like we did last year with English Language Arts in the previous year, or I'm sorry, Social Studies, in the previous year, we were looking at, at science, that we would have at least which standards we're focusing on. Again, local school district control the instruction and the curriculum itself. As a result of that even further, we have provided what, what is going to be a first read tonight for the board as far as new policies. It's called the Controversial Issues in the Classroom Policy. What that does, and in talking to, again, Janet, you know, essentially, we have a practice in place where we certainly do not allow staff to sway our students in anything that may be controversial in nature, whether it's politics or in any other capacity that, again, maybe can shoot as controversial. The policy, the policy itself is what we have in practice. But we thought, given the attention that's being brought forth, that we memorialize that in a policy to make it very clear that this is what the board has approved, and that this is what the expectation is, as it has always been in our processes and our procedures to our staff. Our plan all along was, again, to remind our staff, just like it always has been when we have an election year, when we have hot controversial topics in the media, to remind them that you need to present both sides of the issue. You do not, you cannot swede students. Students need to think for themselves. And what I will say, and I can't get into the details, when circumstances, circumstances like that have come up, and our staff member has not followed through with our expectation, that there is discipline handed down accordingly. And so, again, and I, I do know that we, we did have a couple of situations this last year where it was brought to our attention, and again, we can't get involved in personnel matters in a public meeting like this, but certainly, they are handled accordingly as, as, again, we have directed staff of how to appropriately approach those topics in their classrooms. So again, our goal is to provide a presentation to the board over the course of the next month or so, and again, I'm not sure which meeting it'll be, but just to apprise the board, then again, when we get to that point in the, in the, the meeting tonight to discuss the, the Controversial Issues Policy at play as well. Thank you.
I got one quick question. You mentioned you guys did some research on that Sora app to see if anyone was able to access it. Did you, I don't think you came up with a number. Did anyone check that, those books out, or was there?
Again, when it was brought to our attention, I believe there was internal staff and a parent that had researched it and found it, but we have no indication necessarily that anybody else had accessed that, that specific book.
Okay, thanks.
All right, if there's no other questions on that, we'll move on to district reports. We have an incident report and a donation report. Mr. Seidel, would you like to read the donation report?
We have one donation that was from, let me just blow this up, I didn't bring my glasses again, from, the check date was 6/16/2021. It was for the district office. It was the New Berlin Education Foundation. Proposed use to fund was provide grants in the amount of $8,130.00, and the approval date, 6/23/2021, by Patrick Miller. That ends my report.
Thank you. And then the Consent Agenda, which includes notice, approval minutes of June 28th, and financial reports. Are there any items that should be pulled for separate consideration?
We did receive questions from Chrisland, and we'll be happy to provide those responses as soon as we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
And actually, Patrick already answered all my questions.
Well, then, I guess we are so good that we just get him to take.
I was kind of impressed with the speed, and so I am good. Thank you very much.
Are those answers going to be posted publicly as part of the Finance Committee?
Yeah, I think that we had been rolling those into the minutes, hadn't we, Ron?
Or our regular minutes?
We had been rolling them into the minutes, but there were no questions that we could ask this evening, so it would.
Right, but I sent Patrick an email in between our Finance Committee meeting tonight and this meeting, and he has already responded, and so that should be on your email, so you can just kind of roll that in when you get the chance. So then I think it'll all be part of the record to Janet's question. Right?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay. So do I have a motion for the Consent Agenda?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kurth and a second by Mr. Helmer. To approve the Consent Agenda as presented, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Onto our regular agenda. First on the regular agenda is to discuss approved, recommended reentry planning and mitigation efforts.
Yeah, so I just want to, thank you Dana, yes. I do want to just, before I get into the presentation itself, I do want to just kind of go back to talk about the timeline that we experienced last year as it related to COVID-19. I'm not going to go all the way back to literally a year ago, because I may get the cold sweats if I do that. But what I would like to remind us of were the board's decisions in May to move forward with ending mask requirements in the school, in the school district, by our students and our staff. I'm not going to rehash the, the meeting and the minutes and so on, but ultimately, the board decided to move forward without having those requirements in place. So that's how we essentially ended the school year. Someone could ask me, and actually, I have been asked this by other school districts who are looking to do away with their mask requirements, and ask me how, like, what was the outcome? Ironically, I let them know that our numbers actually went down as far as COVID cases during that time. Now, what could that be attributed to? A lot of things, a lot of factors. But it certainly did not go in the direction that some assumed, where you do, you know, you do away with a mask requirement, and now numbers would somehow grow and grow and grow, and they did not. Quite the con, quite to the contrary. We then brought forth to the board, at the board's request, a plan for summer school and summer options for our students. Again, at that time, the board wanted to move forward with only masks being recommended, and, and we did a few other things that were a little different from the end of the school year. For example, we did move forward with COVID contact tracing, which was minimal at best. We did not see a surge in COVID cases. Again, we, we took the summer to learn because it wasn't, you know, school is required, summer school is not. People opt into summer school. And while we did have virtual options, again, we learned that we could move forward as we had at the end of the school year, with nothing of significance being brought to our attention. In fact, the, the four to six weeks that we offered were rather quiet, and that's why I never provided an update to the board, because there was really nothing to report, other than things were underway, and now they're done. And so now that brings us to what now, as we move into the start of the school year. And so, based off of the board's decision at the end of last school year, based on the board's decision to move forward with what we did this summer, we informed ourselves, based on those actions, on what now. And so this presentation will reflect that what now. I also think it's important for everyone to know, at least in our community, of what they should expect come fall, which school starts about a month from now. And so our parents, our students, our community should know roughly what it is that's before them. And so that's our goal tonight, is to get this presentation to you, get a plan approved, so that we can, you know, and we're ready to basically hit send. David Cody's already got something prepped, ready to go. But again, based on tonight's discussion and approval, we will determine what will be sent out to families as early as, as tomorrow. So with that, I do want to kind of get into our planning and processes. And again, we'll continue to monitor county, city, and district COVID-19 data. What I will say, though, is that.
I'm sorry, Joe, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. I keep getting, I keep pulling up this document, and I can only get the draft. You know, the draft that was uploaded in the packet? I, I logged out and I logged back in, and I tried that a couple of times, and I'm still getting the draft, and like, I don't have this first slide.
Yeah, I think the only thing that's different from the draft copy on this one is this first slide.
Okay.
And/or the word "draft" on the title.
Okay. Then I'll just, I'll just roll with that. Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. So, you know, we'll continue to monitor the data, just like we did all last school year. And I just want to remind you that just because cases did go up, I mean, I will say that in October and November, because of the way that we handled it and the processes that we had in place, we were able to keep schools open despite the, the peaks that we had in COVID cases. Again, we believe strongly that our students belong in school, and that's the, the best place for them to learn, and, and other, other things that go with that, and also providing a virtual option for those that don't. But again, just because numbers go up doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to close school. And so I just, you know, caution folks that if they start seeing things, or this, you know, this Delta variant, and we start creeping things up, you know, we were at a pretty, pretty peak time in October, November, we kept our doors open, we kept students safe, and they were not transmitting COVID in our schools. And again, we'll continue to work with county and city officials. We'll continue to work with our internal pandemic response team. You know, I do, I do want to clarify that our pandemic response team does not necessarily include teachers, support staff, and others. It includes those that are directly involved with the work at many different levels, including our, our nurse. I have a weekly call with our, the Waukesha County Health Department. I've got a weekly call with Waukesha County Superintendents. We need to rely on ourselves locally, and not so much the, what's being put out there at the national level, even the state level, quite honestly, because if, and if we would have followed some of the things that were, were, were being recommended or suggested, we may not have opened school last year, which would have been an absolute travesty. But nonetheless, we will, this is what we will continue to do in our planning and process. As far as what's going to stay the same, again, we will be moving forward with recommending, rather than requiring the use of masks in our schools. They would, they are required on buses, though, there is. So like, while the CDC and, and others have put out this, this new guidance, they are still recommendations, they're not requirements. Unlike that on public transportation, there is an actual requirement out there set out by the CDC. And so we will, because we have a, we, we sublet that out to a private firm, that's their own bus company, they have to follow that national standard, and so do we. But again, you know, the kids don't, they're not required to ride our buses, so if they choose their own transportation, they certainly may. We will continue to contact trace. I'm not going to get into all the details there. And again, if students are symptomatic, they may be isolated, and we'll do a lot of the same things that we did last year, again, to try and mitigate the spread. As far as mitigation strategies, a lot of the things are going to stay the same. In fact, I'd love to be able to say that a lot of these things, you know, other than maybe the drinking fountains, but I think they've always been kind of a cesspool of germs, that, that I think we'll continue to do a lot of the things that we were doing before, that what we heard of being this pandemic, right? I mean, pre-pandemic, these are the things that we should have been doing anyway. We will also continue to, you know, talk to our families to make sure you keep your kids at school. I mean, I think we did learn some things, though, as a result of this thing, you know. Don't send your kids to school if they're sick. You know, I think that helped a lot with, with what we did last year. We'll ask parents to, you know, and staff to do their own health checks. You know, as I understood, at some school districts, we're doing the temperature checks as people were walking in, and, you know, that's just, we never did that. And, you know, again, we felt strongly that our parents were supportive and did what they needed to do to kind of get their kids in school as long as they possibly could. Again, we'll continue to share our COVID data on our dashboard, on our website. And I do want to clarify that, that student athletes may be subject to guidelines that are not necessarily what we approve, but because we are under the guise of the WIAA for athletics, they, we, we need to follow those, those. But again, you know, students are not required to participate in co-curriculars or athletics, but they do need to abide by the rules that are set forth by, by the WIAA. Some of the things that will be changing, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to, you know, most social distancing restrictions will be removed. We are not going to, there were some requests last year of, you know, please keep my student with only the unmasked kids or the masked kids, or, you know, can you make sure that our kids are sitting with the vaccinated kid? Well, we don't, I mean, we know who they are, but we're not going to segregate students by, by that. And, and, and again, it certainly could be self-identifying too on vaccines. And, and again, you know, parents should, you know, will determine whether their respective student should have a mask or not. In fact, I was even talking to my sister-in-law today of, like, what do you plan on doing it, you know? And so, really, it's a parental choice at this time. Plexiglass in most cases will be removed. It'll be the exception, not the rule. One-way hallways will revert to two-way hallways. That was mainly at the middle and high schools. We will go back to the infamous Color Day rotation at the high school and middle school level. That was determined by our teaching and learning team and with our principals, that, that we need to get back to that. While there was some good as a result of what we, the schedule that we followed last year, there were some things missing, you know? So for example, we did not have advisory all of last year. And so advisory handles a lot of our college career and life readiness goals in our strategic plan. And so certainly, we wanted to go back to that. Our elementary school students will change classrooms for their specials. If you're not aware, and if you recall, they were not going to their music room. They were not going to their art room. They were not going to their music room. Those teachers came into their classroom, again, to mitigate that spread. But again, we feel comfortable getting them back and circulating within, throughout the building. At the secondary level, choir band and orchestra, and also some at the elementary will resume the use of their normal spaces for performance and practice. And then hallway and physical education lockers will be available for secondary student use, just like our cubbies at the elementary. What's changing, again, we're going to go back to where we were with elementary lunches. Again, as you recall, similar to what we were doing with teachers coming into their classroom, we were bringing lunches into their classroom, not having students go to the cafeterias. And while it does say here, secondary lunch will be also less restrictive. Some people may think it's going to be more restrictive, especially if you're a sophomore, because we're no longer going to have open campus for them like we used to, at least just for last year. Now, again, we, we've got our practices in place for open campus. You know, we, we want to make sure that there's a carrot out there for students to earn that, that, that opportunity. And so, again, we're going to limit it to juniors and seniors. We will, going to be, we're going to be asking guests and volunteers and visitors back into our buildings. Field trips reinstated. We're going to get back to assemblies, study halls, and pre-pandemic physical education classes, mainly the size of those classes. We're not going to have limitations like we had started the last school year. You know, if you recall, we, you know, we started like the football seasons and even the volleyball season with no spectators or no student spectators. And then we kind of, you know, added, added, added as we learned, and then by the end, we really had no restrictions. And so we're kind of back to that and following what we did at the end of the last school year. Again, we're, we're going to, we did learn some things as far as it relates to staff meetings and just meetings in general, that in some cases, it's just more efficient to have a virtual meeting. You know, I'm, you know, thinking about IEPs, you know, sometimes, or even just like a parent-teacher conference, maybe, you know, that, again, we had a pretty decent success rate last year. And so we're going to take some of the things that we learned last year and maybe implement them, not so much as a result, not, not so much for pandemic-related things, but mainly more efficiency and effectiveness. So, so again, they may still be done virtually, but there's also, you know, some people just may prefer that face-to-face, and I think we're good with that. Now, again, as I mentioned, we are going to be offering a virtual option again next year. There are some things, though, that I do want to clarify as it relates to the virtual options. They're going to be different. So at the secondary level, let me just clarify what I mean by that. Last year at the elementary and secondary, if a student chose the virtual option, which about 25% roughly of our students chose that option, which meant that, you know, we maybe had about 1,000 students plus had, you know, chose that option. It was feasible for us to be able to provide staffing and resources to deliver some direct instruction virtually. Other school districts did not go to that degree of virtual online learning. What they did instead was they provided resources similar to what we plan on presenting, and that's a resource called Edge Annuity. And really, what that is, is more of a traditional online learning option, where students are provided their resources and instruction, and that's done at self-paced, it's a self-paced option with oversight by a teacher or a resource. And again, a lot of, some school districts in Waukesha County, that was their online option last school year. Ours was a bit different, because we actually had a teacher on the other side of that screen for quite a bit of that instruction. But again, as of right now, we don't feel that that's going to be a feasible or viable option. Might it be, depending on, you know, because again, we're going to notify parents as soon as we, the board approves this plan, as early as tomorrow on, please let your schools know exactly what your plans are, and we'll determine then whether Edge Annuity, I mean, that's our plan as we move forward with that. But again, you know, these are going to be the options moving forward, which are different than the previous year. As far as at the secondary level, for example, I'll just use my son Dominic, you know, as an example, even though it's not, it's not true. But if, two years ago, if, you know, prior to the pandemic, if Dominic wanted to take a course online, so say he had a job and it was easier for him to do that course online rather than do it at Eisenhower, we were providing those options for certain courses. And that was through Edge Annuity, actually. And so, so prior to the pandemic, that's how we were doing things at the secondary level. Now, last year, in some cases, we still had courses like that in some cases for some students. But then we also allowed students to pipe into the classroom, you know, via Zoom or Google Meets or whatever it was that we had, you know, that each teacher had determined. But we're going to limit that this year to only the students that may be impacted or quarantined as a result of COVID. So again, as a reminder, those that need to quarantine are those that are COVID-positive. Close contacts do not have to, they're not, they're not required to quarantine. But if they choose to quarantine, they may have the option to pipe into that classroom like they did last year. But again, what I'm suggesting, though, is if a student chooses a virtual option from the onset, they're not going to have that option of necessarily piping in. Their option will be through Edge Annuity, through BYU, or these other options that we've mentioned here. Again, we are going to be asking families to let us know as soon as possible, or let their building principals know as soon as possible, what they're choosing to do. And again, you know, our goal is to provide and articulate with them, you know, so should, you know, Ron choose to sign his student, or students up for the virtual option, our principals will work with Ron and the student to determine, hey, this is what we plan on doing, answer any questions, and then let the parents know whether this is really what they want to do, or if they want to choose a face-to-face learning, or, you know. You know, again, we will work with each family to determine exactly how they'll move forward, but these are the options that we're moving forth at this time. Again, students can access, you know, their instruction, directions, assignments, and activities while they are, you know, in Canvas, just like they were able to all of last year. There are recorded lessons on Canvas. I'm not sure that we're going to do full recordings like we did last year. I think one of the things that we need to be careful with, too, and another reason why, you know, Kelly and her team decided that we need to be careful with this piping in, is that instruction really changed last year to a certain degree. And it's interesting what a camera will do to good instruction. Now, we were having our staff sit in front of the camera, right? But then what does that mean for the other 20-some-odd kids in that classroom? It's not good instruction to be sitting up front, delivering, you know, instructional models when our teachers really should be out and about in the classroom. That's good instruction, engagement. And so, that, again, that's another reason why we've determined that the options are not as feasible as we would like, and we want our staff interacting and engaging with our students, just like they were prior to the pandemic. No assessments will be taken virtually for obvious reasons. Students with excused abstinence will be permitted to make up their coursework, just like they have. And then again, as I had mentioned, because we're bringing back the color, the color schedule, we are now able to get flex and advisory back into the 7th through 12th grade programming. Additional info is that, you know, again, these are some of the things that other districts have shared. Certain, but we do get questions, you know. Some are asking, are we going to be requiring students to get vaccinated? No, we will not. Are we going to be offering vaccine clinics or COVID-19 testing? No, I think at this point, our students, at least those 12 and over, have had access to the vaccine now for months. You know, and those that are 12 and under, that should be up to their pediatrician, not necessarily us as a school district. So there's certainly a lot more things involved. And then again, like our staff, I believe we're up to, the overwhelming majority of our staff have either chosen, or have had the option and are chosen to get vaccinated. So again, we feel comfortable moving forward. And again, if people are volunteering to come into our schools, they should know exactly what to expect. And again, volunteering is volunteering, and if you know what the expectations are, then, you know, choose to do what you need to do if you don't feel comfortable in that setting. We are going to be asking the board, or actually, as part of this approval, of that January 24, which is, that'd be a work, a staff work and transition day. So that would mean no school for students on that day. What that will allow us to do, just like it did last year, is that if we have students coming back at semester, it'll allow us to make that transition a lot more smooth than it had. I mean, it was extremely well-received by our staff and our administrative team, and even by some parents, like, let's hit pause, let's make sure that we are ready to get into the second semester. And if we're letting families know, like, in the next month or so, that there's going to be a date coming in January, I think they're going to be okay with it. And they should also be glad that our schools are open and not like what happened from March until the start of June for those, like, eight to 10 weeks. So again, all mitigation strategies, learning models, and school calendar are subject to change through the administration or school board decision. I mean, I think the one thing we've learned is to be flexible, to be accommodating, and to be prepared to turn on a dime. And I'm proud to be able to say that we kept our school open last year because of that planning and that fortitude that our staff had, our parents had, our students had. We were extremely resilient. And I, again, I'm happy to be able to say that, I can say last year was a success. I don't know of some school districts in the area that could actually say that. And so just a few other reminders, we've got the first day of school coming up, Wednesday, September 1st. Schools will share info regarding open houses and picture days, because those certainly in the elementaries, you know, happened before the start of the school year. And then obviously, we would encourage anybody and everybody that's out there that, you know, once we get this out there, our hope is that families will be settled in as to what they want to be able to do as far as, you know, bringing students back to face-to-face if they weren't, continuing with this alternate virtual option and so on. So again, we are seeking the board's approval so that we can get a communication out to our families and their, and our students and our staff as early as tomorrow. Any questions?
My first question is about the, what was it called?
I was going to say, we should probably do the motions, so then we can open it up for discussion. That makes more sense. So do I have a motion to approve the reentry planning as presented?
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Hallmer and a second by Mr. Kirf to approve any discussion. You may go ahead.
So my first question is about the Edge Annuity. You mentioned, this is always so awkward, because I can't look at you while I talk, but you mentioned that you didn't think it was feasible to keep the model that we had last year. But yet, this end-of-year survey showed that 26% of families were still interested in the virtual option if masks were not going to be required. So are we now thinking there are going to be less families that want virtual, and why do you think that?
Lots has changed since that survey went out. And we will find out exactly what those numbers will be over the coming weeks. So again, at this time, that's our plan. And at the same time, you know, should we feel that it's unnecessary to move in a different direction, that's something we'll consider doing. And again, what I will say is, you know, other school districts in Waukesha County, that is what they offered, and they felt it's to be a successful delivery and approach. And so based on that feedback and those conversations, we feel the same at this time.
Do we have concerns that we'll lose more families? I know we lost a lot of students last year with COVID. Do you think we'll, if the only option we have is this third-party option, will families look elsewhere to find a better virtual option?
Anything's possible, given the pandemic.
Jill, what does that timeline look like for? I know you said you want to send this out, I think, like, as soon as possible, right?
Yeah, we would send it out tomorrow, and then we're looking to have families notify their principals in their building by August 10.
So is this, like, a formal survey, or?
No.
Send out an email to people, and people are supposed to respond, like, if they want to go virtual?
Correct.
Okay, so then when you get those responses, I guess I'd be interested, sort of to Kate's point about, because I think we lost about 110 students, was the number, if I remember correctly, last year, who just went elsewhere, just left our district and just said, I'm taking my 110 kids and going elsewhere. So I guess what I'd like to know is, did we get any of those people back? Because I'd like to, is there any way to figure that out, so you can give us those numbers? In addition to, did we lose any other kids because of the method in which we're reopening? Is that, is that a clear question?
Not really.
Okay, sorry.
But what I will say is, we did try and dig down into what happened to those 133.
Oh, sorry, more than 110.
Students.
Yeah.
And while there were, some homeschooled because they didn't like either option.
Sure.
Some chose a different virtual option, which, and, you know, again, that those other virtual options, about 95% of them are literally what we're offering in Edge Annuity, not the way that we delivered it last year internally. And so, but a lot of those, what we found out last year is, a lot of those people actually just moved out of the school district.
Like physically moved?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
And so it wasn't.
Was it like 90% of the numbers? I think it showed, you gave a presentation on that, and it was how many people moved out of southeastern Wisconsin. It wasn't even like moved to Franklin or something, it was out of state.
Yeah, so, you know, again, I, you know, the way that you worded the question, it seemed that people left because of how we were handling COVID. That was not the case.
Okay.
They were leaving because they were leaving, not because of COVID. You know, not because of how the district was handling COVID.
Okay.
And so, so again, I just wanted to clarify that, that. But I think COVID certainly could have played a factor, like, did somebody lose a job, and that's why they had to move? Did somebody lose a, well, move to get a different job? Did somebody lose a job and couldn't afford their current housing? So, you know, there's a lot of things that come into play that unfortunately, we weren't able to, I mean, we couldn't get to that level of detail. But what we did find out is people were just moving. And I do believe that that, yeah, the pandemic had something to do with it, but not necessarily the way that we delivered the instruction and the way that we mitigated our efforts to COVID.
Sure.
But certainly, we are keeping an eye on enrollment. Certainly, this, again, I do believe people are waiting to know what the school district will do. And so we'll continue to make a push. Now, we've been pushing our marketing throughout the school year. We've continued to do that during the summer. We actually have marketing plans in place. And we continue to reach out to those families that, you know, again, are considering, you know, for example, if Mitch were to choose, you know, if we have this conversation, we want to make sure we have, you know, a really, a really good conversation with their families on what those options really are for next year, because every family and student is extremely important to us. Not just because we need the enrollment, but because they deserve a quality education in our school district.
And one last question. So we're talking about, in this proposal, we're talking about using this third-party provider for virtual schooling, whether at the secondary or the primary level. We had on the table a while back a virtual charter school that we were talking about moving forward with. And I feel like, and I know that that's a big undertaking, like, I get that the size of that is huge. But it struck me that it might be a great opportunity to sort of, you know, work that out with a smaller group of participants than to have a charter school that was kind of open to all later on. And I guess I just want to check in with you about where we're at with the virtual charter school efforts, and if that's been, I mean, I understand we've been a little distracted by, you know, other things. But where are we at with that?
Well, like I mentioned, probably about a year ago, as we put hold on it because, because of the pandemic.
Right, right.
And again, we are learning a lot. So actually, last year was basically a pretty good case study on.
Yeah.
What you could or couldn't do. But at the same time, we really want to focus on the kids that we have now and these options. And again, I will be delaying this virtual charter school for probably at least another school year, because that would, basically, we would have been planning for the last year if we were to open something up for next school year even. And so, like you said, it is a huge undertaking. But again, we've learned a lot, and we're learning a lot from other school districts, and we'll continue to do that. But at this time, again, if we haven't already been planning for it, we will not likely have a charter school option, virtual charter school option next school year. But know that that is on one of the things that we are.
On the radar.
We continue to work on it, but just not moving it forward at this time.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
On the color day rotation, I was just kind of curious, because I know we had positive feedback regarding the blocking that we were doing. So is the blocking going away, or is the blocking staying the same and going into the color rotation as well?
The block scheduling is going away at this time, we're going back to the infamous color day schedule. I'm not sure my daughter is either, so that's okay.
Yeah, I think there's mixed opinion on that, so. My kid was the opposite.
And again, what I will say is, you know, our administrative team and staff, you know, because for staff, too, like, in some cases, they wouldn't see kids for a few days. So, you know, there were just a lot of things that we learned, and, and yes, there's just good and bad. I mean, for every kid, and like, I saw a kid at QuickTrip on Friday, and virtual was, the virtual option was incredible for them. But she's going to be a senior, and she wants to come back her senior year, so she'll be back in school, but. Well, start with that, Jeff, and then just, yeah, start with, yes, you get your locker back. And then just mumble the rest of it about this color.
I have another question. So, well, it's more of a concern. At the elementary school level, I mean, I'm still concerned, because kids of that age are not able to get vaccinated, so I'm not even going to suggest masking of children. But I am concerned about volunteers coming into the building. So we do know, while kids don't necessarily transmit it a lot, adults do often spread COVID to children. So can we require, well, I'm going to say, I think we should require vaccinations for adults coming in to volunteer, or those unvaccinated adults, I feel like, should be wearing masks, because they are going to be putting our kids at risk, and that is not really a requirement of school to have adults in the classroom.
On that topic of visitors, I think I saw we were still required in the visitor health questionnaire. Quiet out there. Is that, what's the reasoning for that? Is that, so like, we still have to do that? Is that teachers? Is that teachers? Is that just guests that don't come there every day?
Just visitors coming in.
Okay.
Yeah, so no, no longer, staff will do their own, students will do their own. But as far as visitors, they will need to complete it. We just felt there was a good middle ground.
We see differently on that.
I mean, and again, the, you know, as Kate mentioned, you know, she's got, you know, so if the board would choose to do away with that, I mean, that's something that, that's why we're presenting it. We're not, you know, we didn't, we don't, I mean, it'd be nice if you, Carpe Blanche approved it, but I expected a little.
I literally was sitting here and someone mentioned that and I was logging in, filling it out because I forget to do it sometimes. And it's, to me, if we're at this point and you knowingly come to a meeting with a cough or symptoms, I mean, I think we're pretty far into this that we should not be doing those things, so.
I guess I, my, as a formality, and back to all, you know, not only Kate's, but also your point, Mitch, is, I guess, are you making a friendly amendment to your, your motion? To, to do away with that for visitors?
I would like to, but I guess I'll wait till everyone talks before I make that amendment.
Sure.
And if anyone has any contradictory to that, I'd welcome to hear it too before I make the motion. But otherwise, I agree with 99% of your presentation.
That's great to hear.
So just so I heard correct, you will require visitors? And what about parental volunteers? They'll be required to.
Yes.
Fill out the questionnaire in advance?
Correct. Or before they come in. But again, that's what Mitch is suggesting is that we not do that.
Yeah, it's, it's sometimes, I don't, I don't always remember to fill it out right away either, so.
My problem with that is just when people are coming in, it slows up everything in the lobby. Someone has to process a paper form or go online and do it. And if it's paper forms, I think we're actually probably contradictory. We're, we're spreading more germs than we would be if we were not requiring.
Yeah, we actually, you know, that was something that we had talked about. So like, for example, you know, the kindergarten days, the first days of kindergarten or first days of school, parents want to come in, we're prepared to accept a whole bunch of visitors. So we're prepared to do that. But again, if the board wants to move in a different direction, certainly we could understand.
One more thing. Last year, when we repealed, when we removed the mask mandate, you gave numbers and I think it was 20 to 25 students came from virtual to in-person because they were okay with being in schools without masks on. And I think we lost two to five that went from in-person to virtual. Are those numbers accurate or do those numbers change at all towards the end of the year?
I don't recall the numbers exactly, but I do know there were more students that came back to face-to-face. I, you know, I'm not sure, I can't necessarily say your numbers are wrong, but I can't say they're right.
Okay.
I just know there were more students that came back than students that chose to stay home.
And that's what I remember too. I just, I, for some reason, I thought they're in that range, but I just want to make sure that we're clear that we brought more students back while removing that mask mandate than when we had it.
That's what I had reported to the board last spring, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But again, I, I do, you know, I, I, we are keeping track of the numbers. I mean, that's going to be important to us and at this time, that's why we want to get this approval, so that we can get that out there. And, you know, we may be back here in a couple of weeks saying, this is what we've learned and this is what we may need to do differently.
And that wasn't a typo on the tracker? The last 11 days of school without the mask mandate, we had zero new cases?
There were no errors in our tracking mechanisms.
So the number was zero?
I don't know if they were zero. I can just tell you there were no errors.
Okay.
Because I don't remember those last 11 days exactly.
Thanks.
Seems like a lifetime ago.
It does.
Any other comments or does anybody want to debate either possible friendly amendment of requiring vaccinations for parents or doing away with the questionnaire?
Go ahead and word your amendment, whatever. It'd probably be easier if we know what your opinion is going to be.
Okay, well, the first, do I have a friendly amendment to require visitors to be vaccinated?
Well, I would really like that to be the case. I'm not going to bother making an amendment.
So no, no friendly amendment on that? Okay. Do I have a friendly amendment to end the questionnaire for visitors?
I would like to make a friendly amendment to remove the questionnaire for health, the health questionnaire for visitors.
I have a motion by Mr. Helmer and a second by Mr. Kirth. Discussion on the amendment.
Was that a friendly amendment?
No.
So you don't really need to, you don't really need to.
Well, they don't then?
Second that.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah, it's just a friendly amendment and you have to make sure that it's okay with the second.
I'm glad you know. Thank you.
No, it was actually, so it was actually an unfriendly amendment then?
Friendly amendment, then we're good.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you, I mean, do you see any major complications with that? I don't, okay.
No.
Then it's friendly.
Okay. Does anybody want to discuss that? All right. Well, I'm in favor of, of the, of the presentation as, as presented and the friendly amendment. So those are my comments. If we're ready to vote, then we will take the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes. Then we are on to discuss and approve the annual declaration and notice of the district student academic standards for school year 2021, 2022.
As mentioned previously, this is a formality. Action on the annual declaration and notice of the district student academic student standards is statutorily required on an annual basis during your first meeting in July. Attached are those for the year 2122. This has been reviewed by us and is presented to you for your approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second then.
Okay, so I have a, a motion by Mr. Helmer and a second by Mr. Kirth. Any discussion? I ask this every year and I'm going to ask it again. So I know that we have to, like you just said, the school board is the one that sets the standard, has, has to vote for it. Is there much leeway though in what we can set? Because it seems like, on the one hand, the statutes say that the school board has to set the standards. But on the other hand, the statutes sort of say you need to follow pretty much state standards.
Yeah, and what I will tell you is the devil's in the details in the curriculum and the resources that we provide our students. So in my opinion, and what I've always shared, like this even started way back when and I think Amy will recall, the common core standards are basically our floor, not our ceiling. And so, you know, just because the state sets aside standards, doesn't mean that that's what we strive for and/or the detail in the instruction, the curriculum and the resources that we have with our students. That's all locally controlled. And so again, can the school district itself make up their own standards? Yes, you can, but I would caution you on that. I just, I'll echo what happened up in Germantown. They were, you know, they were not content with the common core standards. They said they were going to put together their own and I have yet to, when was that now? Six, seven years ago? I have yet to see their new standards, so. I would be really careful that, to deviate from that. But again, just, I want to clarify that you still have local control of the curriculum, the resource and the instruction that goes with it.
Any other discussion?
My only question is, did anything change from last year?
Um, no, there were, there were, there continues to be minor edits as it relates to certain pieces, but nothing of substance. And there are continual updates at the state of which, then Kelly, when we, again, they may make some adjustments, but they may not change the, the big standard, but may, maybe some of the things underneath it, of which again, those aren't substantive to, to, in nature.
If there's no other discussion, then we'll take the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes. Discuss approve policy 2260 nondiscrimination. And so that's been presented to us and the most recent is in the packet.
Yes, the, again, I did receive one comment and I would ask Kate to remind the board of that, which was also brought up at the previous board meeting. Other than that, I did not hear from any other board members for additional changes. So I guess Kate, I don't know.
Yeah, actually, I'll take the, take the motion first. So do I have a motion to approve the policy 2260 nondiscrimination as presented?
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Helmer, a second by Mr. Kirth. Any discussion?
So I would ask the other board members to again, consider adding gender expression into this policy. I do have another question about the characteristics versus classes change. I don't think we discussed that at the last meeting. Where did that come from and why?
I think originally the district was using characteristics, but Neola preferred classes. So I think there was some, I missed a few in there when I was updating, so Neola recommends classes.
I believe that state and federal law uses the term classes, so that's consistent.
And do state and federal law, I guess Joe, use gender expression as a protected class? Er, yeah, protected class? No. Okay.
Yeah, I couldn't find it listed anywhere except on the DPI website in which they recommend to provide safe schools for LGBT students, that you adopt a school nondiscrimination and anti-bullying policy that enumerates or specifically includes actual or perceived sexual orientation or gender idea, identity or expression. So we would be consistent with DPI's recommendation if we added that in.
Sorry, can you say those three again?
Actual or perceived sexual orientation or gender identity or expression.
So it's saying one of those three, right? And we have two of them, is it?
No, they're saying like you should enumerate and specifically call out those three things because they're not the same. So I think the point I made in email is, who does it hurt if we don't put it in? But who could it potentially help if we did put it in? So it's essentially two words that maybe would help some student that, yes.
Does our dress code use gender terms such as he, him, or a girl's dress? So who are these, who are these policies for? Are they for our students? Or are they for us? Are they for everyone within the district?
Anyone.
Anyone. So we already have a dress code that does not specify any sort of gender roles as it is. So we already technically have it in a document. I mean, I, I don't think we really need it as part of this document as well. That's my opinion.
I have a mild concern with the term expression anyway, because expression could be a term used within the First Amendment and anybody expressing speech in any way, shape or form. It's already in our First Amendment. It's in the Constitution. I don't think we need further language that can either cloud or dilute that language or possibly put more, actually restrictions on something that is already, you know, expressed in our Constitution.
I did some research myself and I found that when you use the term gender expression as a protected class, just like it, like the EOC and any other state and federal type regulations, they read into it gender expression. So I think that alone would protect gender expression and I do not agree with putting in an additional phrase. Is there any other discussion on this policy? Okay, then we will take the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, policy passes. And we have a discuss approve policy 5122 entrance ages.
I, we did note suggestions from the board at the last meeting. We did add under subletter B, the first bullet point after the second paragraph, any student who has moved to the district from another state or country. Note that we, adding the district is moot. Wisconsin does not require parents to enroll their five-year-olds into 5K. And then I do want to clarify again what was mentioned at the last meeting that, that essentially this takes the board out of the appeal process. Essentially, the board is memorializing what the expectations are as it relates to early entrance and that the appeal process stops with the superintendent or designee.
Do I have a motion to approve policy 5122 as presented?
Second.
A little early.
You two go back and forth. I have a motion by Mr. Kirth and a second by Mr. Helmer to approve. Any discussion?
Joe, I had a question on 5112, are they both it? Not the entrance age, the administration rule. It says, where is it? Sorry. I, based on the information gathered through the formal assessments, observations and parent input, the school psychologist will meet with the parents within 90 days of receiving the early entrance application. That seems like a really long time for the psychologist to have that. And I was trying to read it. Is that when they get the information to when they have to report to the parents? Or is that when the process starts?
That's when they get the information. I think part of the issue is that some of it may require additional testing, dependent on what is actually determined on the front. And Kelly, is there anything that you could add to that? I mean, I think part of the issue is that you don't know what's forthcoming. Or for example, if a student is in the process of an IEP, that could impede the, the, the process slightly, which, you know, so more testing could be forthcoming. And so, again, that's been a standard that we've had and I don't think we've had an issue with it, but.
Yeah, I was just looking because it's based on the timelines of when the parent has to have the application into, by the time that stuff happens and then the 90 days, I mean, we're basically like two weeks away from school starts, I feel like.
So Mitch, are you talking about I?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Well, then I comes up, or that same thing comes back up again on number four on the second part.
Yeah, so even, anytime you have to do any kind of an evaluation or a psych has to do any kind of an evaluative assessments, it, it really is sort of a 90, 90 days is sort of IEP language. 90 days is any type of assessments on students. So from the time we get notified that a parent is requesting this, the, the psych has 90 days. Now, our goal is that we're within 90 days, but it just, in case it's the middle of the summer or what, whatever that timeline is, we want to make sure that we have enough time to get all of the assessments completed. And as you can see, there's multiple parts of the assessment. So each of those parts can take a little bit of time. So that's, that's, that's been standard and from what we looked at from other policies and other areas, we're, our administrative rules are very similar to others.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you guys had enough time, but we also weren't delaying on parents and we're fair on both ends, so. Thanks for that explanation.
Other than the removal of the board appeal, are there any other changes to this administrative rule from what we had seen a few months ago?
No. And again, this was, you know, this was something that Mitch had asked be included and so, because that's where the, the details were.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing. I forgot we were adding this.
You are right on top of it.
Will the administrative rule be housed with the policy then? So they're.
Yeah, they, they typically are, yes.
And I think it's usually on like the how to enroll page. Or for the early childhood or kindergarten information page.
Does anybody have anything else? I, I still, it doesn't sit well with me that the board doesn't have the final appeal. And I, and I understand the comments from the last meeting that there's like a sense of false hope for the parent. But when I was looking at the state statutes, I originally thought that it said the administration was to set the, the criteria for early admission. the criteria for early admission, but it actually gives the authority to the board. So that's why I think the board should still have the final say, because it's, it's the board who's really setting the requirements for early administration. So I don't know, whatever, if anybody wants to comment on that.
Do we want to just put something in there that says superintendent must notify the board so that we know about it? And if we want to, we would then have to change our policy by an extenuating circumstance?
I think it's just, should be good to have that accountability, that if a parent feels that the administrative rule wasn't followed, or the policy wasn't followed, that they still have the board to go to. Not, I'm not saying that I expect them not to be followed. It's just, should be there. I just think it should, because the statute gives the authority to the board. So I don't think the board should be giving up their authority for full oversight.
But, well, the parent could reach out to us in any situation. I mean, they should follow the escalation process.
But if the policy says the final decision is the superintendent's, can the board look and go, you know, we don't agree. We think the superintendent and the administration did not follow the rules? Just if that ever happened. I'm not saying it would, but again, the board should have the final say.
Well, I mean, I think we have the say, because we've set the policy. And I agree with Mitch, if there ever was an issue and someone thought the policy wasn't followed, they can always come to the board at that point. But I think what we discussed last time is, we're giving false hope to families if we're allowing them to appeal to the board. And anytime they're not happy with the administration's decision, and all we're going to do is go back to our policy. And if they don't meet the requirements of the policy, we're not going to overturn the decision. So I feel like Joe would let us know if there was a reason we should change our policy, but.
Well, and we'd have to change our policy if we were to make an exception, essentially.
Correct, so like we can't.
Right, that's the only time we'd have to, well, no. What I'm saying is, let's say, let's say we have a rogue superintendent five years down the road, and the superintendent.
I think we got a whole nother issue then, if we've got a rogue superintendent. It's not going to just be this one policy.
No, but I mean, there's just, if by some chance the policy and the administrative rules were not followed, do we, does the board have any ability to reverse something that if the policy says the superintendent has the final say?
What I will, what I will share with you, Janet, is there are other policies where the superintendent is the final say. So there are other policies that are like that. So this isn't unique in that nature.
Well, maybe those policies are wrong.
Pardon me?
Maybe those policies are wrong, I don't know. I just, it's because the state statute gives the authority to the board to set these policies and the criteria for early. I just think it's, we should still have the final say.
We're doing that, we're setting the policy.
I know, but let's say, let's say, like, I don't know how else to say it other than, what if you have a superintendent that doesn't follow the policy? What's the recourse?
Yeah, so let's say there was a rogue superintendent in another district.
Okay.
I think if there was a procedural error at that point, I think the board certainly could have some recourse. And again, it is your own policy, it is, I mean, ultimate, I mean, that's what's written in the policy. But I think if there was, like, if there was a procedural error or something that was just, you know, blatantly, obviously wrong by the administration, there's a way for the school board to be able to supersede that determination.
All right, if anybody else has any comments, questions? All right, then we'll take the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes. Well, you convinced me. Okay, then, discuss, approve policy 5421 grading. So any changes to that since it was the first read? I didn't think there was. No. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve policy 5421 on grading?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Seidel and a second by Mr. Homer. Any discussion on this? No discussion on this one?
I'm sorry, I'm just checking my notes from last time. I had a question about the dual enrollment grades and the GPA. Did we get an answer on that?
Yeah, we, that's something we're going to consider looking into further moving forward. But, you know, as, students are already enrolled for the upcoming school year. I think part of the problem is waiting a course. For example, right now, students can take, they can take credits somewhere else because we don't offer it internally. And it literally could be the infamous underwater basket weaving course. And to be able, and so because we don't offer it, as a school district, we actually have to approve that course for students to have access to that somewhere else. In some cases, it could be a college, in some cases, another high school, and so on, online. And so for us, we're trying to determine a way to be able to truly find a way to approve those that may be rigorous in cer, to a certain degree versus those underwater basket weaving type courses. So as of right now, they're under this, that same category, but we're trying to find a way that's not discriminatory in nature. And that's essentially what we need to kind of weed through, first of all. And then secondly, to determine, you know, kids that are already signed up for these courses and to be able to go back now, at least for the upcoming school year. Again, my daughter would agree with Janet's son or daughter that, that she would love for these to be, certainly have weighted to them as she enters her senior year. But that's just, we're just not ready to do that at this time.
Okay, thanks for looking into that at least.
Sure.
I was assuming they were actually more challenging courses always, and I don't know. It seemed like then waiting it would be helping those students to choose to go to college to take an advanced course that we don't offer. But if that isn't really the case, that makes sense.
Some of them are challenging. My daughter's.
I agree, I'm not saying they're not, but I was assuming they were all like higher level.
It's a UWM course she takes during her study hall, so.
Just trying to help out our honors kids that might be going elsewhere and then should, should be getting like a boost.
Yeah, and again, some of them are, you know, four-year colleges, and I'm not trying to, even some four-year college courses are not rigorous. I mean, I, I took bowling in college, and I got an A, but it was not rigorous.
Do we track, though, to know what classes that the students have been taking? Do we have some that have taken sort of, you know, fun class that really isn't?
We, we have a list of every single dual enrollment course that any student has taken, so we know how many college credits they're earning and what they're earning it for. It's, the only thing is, and this is why we just, we want to have a year to create kind of a rubric by which we would measure the dual enrollment courses to determine sort of whether it would be something that we would want to wait. It was just going to take us longer than a board meeting to kind of get to the bottom of that. But we really want to dig in a little bit more.
I mean, there's merit, there's certainly merit to the point.
Right.
Because we want to encourage, I mean, that's part of our college career readiness dashboard is access to college-level coursework, right? So, and again, sometimes that is a deterrent for kids to take it, because it's not weighted, which is why they weren't taking courses like I A too, which was a great course, that was an internal course, rigorous, but it wasn't weighted. So, or, they weren't getting college credit for it either.
Right, and our dual enrollment classes, they are an automatic college grade. Whereas an AP course is, could be determinate upon where a student chooses to go for their post, you know, post-secondary. So, so it's just something that we want a little bit more time to dig into, and we'll, we'll be digging into, we want our kids to, we have kids at 15, 30. We've even had one that had 60 credits, which is great. So we want more of that, but we'll look into it this year.
All right, any other discussion? If there's no more discussion, then all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes. Discuss, approve policy, now, these are sort of combined because they're all related. 5116 hazing, 5517 student anti-harassment, and 5517.01 bullying. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Homer and a second by Mr. Kurth. Any discussion?
I will just state for the record that I also wanted gender expression to be added to these policies.
We did not receive additional commentary from the rest of the board.
Did have one other question. In regards to the classes versus characteristics, I, I think I saw characteristics still used in one of these. So I don't know.
Or classes?
No. I, I think it was the anti-harassment. I don't know, I was trying, when I read that change, I was trying to look at.
Can we make a friendly amendment? Then we approve this based on you making changes from characteristics to classes?
Sure.
It could have just been like a literal, they use the word characteristics in a different way, but I was like, where, where were we changing this? Where were we not changing it? So.
Yeah, you did a search all though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And I may have missed one, but now that you say that, there may be a spot in one of the policies.
It might have been like an intentional use of the words characteristic. I'll try and look forward to it.
But I, when I make the final copies, I'll check on it.
Oh, you're ready to vote, I'm sorry. I didn't know if there's any other questions. So all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? I'm sorry, say it again? You're opposing, okay. Okay, so motion does pass. Now we have first read of policies 2240, 5500, 5610, 5611, 5780, 6152, and 8462.01.
So these policies, as we had brought forth to the board as far as a policy review, were next on the docket for first reads. Again, first read means that the board will be reviewing them, has reviewed them, will continue to review them, we will be seeking approval at the next school board meeting. Policy 2240, I do want to reiterate, based on my commentary earlier, that we are bringing forth controversial, controversial issues in the classroom policy, which has been our practice. We're memorializing it in policy. And that way, you know, if the board had any questions, this is how we move forward. It's a clear expectation, and we plan on sharing this with our staff just like we had in the past, but now with this policy. Please note that that first policy 2240 was not included in our original planning docs for these policies, but it was added based on feedback I had received from Janet and others. Other than that, I did not receive any comments or questions from board members when, after they received the packet. And again, we would ask you that if you do have comments, questions, or concerns, please send them to Diana. She will coordinate them, and we'll be sure to include them in the upcoming board packet. And again, we'll be seeking approval of these policies at the next meeting. I also did want to clarify the student fees and charges, as was clarified by Ron and the Finance Committee. They are not necessarily looking to change the fees and charges that were updated a year or so back, but that's simply we were updating the policy per Neola.
And also, the number went from, let me just take a look here. It was changed from 5135 to 6152 to coincide with the Neola policy.
So we will be seeking approval at the next meeting.
Can I just make a quick comment? There are a couple policies that are in here that were not in the email. Was there a second email? Or did, should I just have checked this board packet before?
I think they were added after that original email.
So I'll, I'll review them tomorrow and get you my questions.
No problem, thank you.
Any other questions on these before we move on? Okay, then our next one is action items discussed in closed session. We had two of them. Can I have those motions?
I move to approve the employment, performance, and compensation matter pertaining to staff as presented.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Kurth and a second by Mr. Homer. And we discussed that in closed session. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes. We have the second one.
I move to approve the recommendation for benefit consultant as presented.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Kurth and a second by Mr. Homer. We do have a little background information on that before we vote.
Yeah, so we began a search for a new benefits consultant back in March of 2021. I believe it was a couple months after that that we had updated the Personnel Committee, led by Kate, informing them that we had started the search, and we were beginning to narrow the search. We vetted them all and did several rounds of interviews and consultation and documentation. We came down to actually two finalists, which was USI and who was the other, Marsh McLennan?
Hayes.
With Hayes and USI. We determined that we would move forward with USI for the upcoming year based off of not only their presence and strong total package of industry leadership, but also a strong understanding of school district self-insurance, of which we are as a school district, and experience with Southeast Wisconsin self-insured districts, district office service and support, employee communication and support, and data analytics to help steer present and future decisions. What this would do is this would put our current vendor hub on notice that we would be moving forward and moving away from their contract so that we could go ahead and move forward with that of USI. Our goal is to have a one-year contract with USI, evaluate, determine what else needs to be encapsulated in our agreement for future years, which would be a multi-year contract, which would include performance expectations for payment of USI. So based off of that, we're seeking approval to move forward with this recommendation of a new benefits consultant.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes. All right. Future meetings and dates. Board meetings are generally held the second and fourth Monday beginning at 7:00 PM in the Eisenhower Common unless noted otherwise. So the next meeting is August 9th, and then we have another one August 23rd. It is, there is also a finance meeting prior to that at 5:45 PM. August 30th, there's a 4:00 Personnel Committee meeting. Currently, it's set to be virtual, I think, I'm not sure. But that will be updated on, when the agenda is released. Other important events and dates, September 27th, that is the district budget hearing annual meeting, 7:00 in the Eisenhower Commons. And it's time to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr., Mr. Kurth, a second by Mr. Homer. All those in favor, aye, raise your right hand. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.